Agenda review and disposition, anything to add to tonight's agenda?
I'm doing Mr. Chairman under other business. We have the CTE contract with Trish Lindberg that needs to be renewed. The board's so desired. And then we will need in the non-public session, I have three co-curricular nominations.
Okay, minutes November 7th, 2016, I'll incorporate a motion to accept as stated.
I'll move to accept as written.
Second.
The paper.
Aye.
Principles report.
Well, report cards went home today. It's the end of the trimester and with the report card, we sent a letter home explaining our work habits rubric. The students have seen the rubric all along, almost every day, so this is nothing new for them and for some of the parents, but it's a new look and it's a work in progress. We did ask for parent feedback on the report card acknowledgement form, so we're looking forward to tweaking and fine tuning it, but personally, I'm really excited that we're bringing the skills, the four work habit skills to the forefront, the preparation and collaboration, preparedness, those are all really important skills. We are going to take some time to reflect this week with students. They'll take a look and see, you know, where are the fours, where are the threes, where are the twos, and develop some more goals around those. So, I do want to just say once again, thank you to Andy McDonald and there's a crew of teachers who helped out. This is really important work and it's really nice to see it in action. On November 10th, Plymouth Elementary School had its annual tribute to veterans. As always, it was a very special morning with local veterans and veterans from Plymouth Elementary School, Mr. Lebec and Mrs. Marinowski. They were being honored in many ways. A special congratulations to Mr. Jake Stevens, our new band chorus and music director. He had the band accompany the chorus for "Oh Beautiful," for spacious skies, and that's really never been done before, where we actually had our band accompany the chorus. So, it was really a lovely, a lovely event, and thank you to him. And we had a full house on both Monday and Tuesday, November 14th and 15th. Some people had Thanksgiving dinner twice, or three times, bless you. Thank you to middle school students who served the lunch, a delicious turkey dinner. The cafeteria was festive with tablecloths, candles created by our first graders, and the walls were decorated with student art and writing, all expressing gratitude, thanks to Kelly, who coordinated the event and had that nice Kelly touch. It was very, it was lovely. Our teacher leader team of Robin Morse, Ellen Hand, Patty Dimick, and Paula Tanner. Tanner and myself attended a powerful workshop with Kim Marshall. Mr. Marshall shared terrific data on the importance of effective teaching every day. He demonstrated some specific assessment strategies, all clearly connected to a comprehensive teacher evaluation supervision model. He had lunch with us, which was really cool, and just reinforced our focus on authentic performance assessments and the fact that we spend a lot of time looking at student work together. He said that that has been proven to be the absolute best way to energize and improve teaching, so we felt really good, good about that, and he gave us some other great ideas. This past Saturday, about fifty, seventy community members turned out to run the six annual Jingle Bell Run and Pancake Breakfast. What a team effort led by Sarah Sanborn. We had a beautiful running site, lots of hills, and it was fun just to see all the mixed ages together. Janet King and Valerie Bickford from Cafe Services volunteered and worked serving waffles, pancakes, bacon fruit, candy canes. It was a great community event with registrations and donations over fifteen hundred dollars to benefit our winter program scholarships. And Saturday evening, PES students could be seen marching throughout the Plymouth Parade. They were hockey players, gymnasts, Girl Scouts, and our own student council had a wonderful float on holidays around the world. Again, Mr. Stevens has jumped right in and could be seen driving, driving the float. Upcoming dates, this Thursday, we have a Title I onsite visit, which Kathleen Smith, our reading specialist, has put together for us. Friday, December 9th, our middle school in the afternoon will be doing their annual community service within the school and beyond. Wednesday, December 14th, we have the kindergarten through grade three concert, and Wednesday, January 11th, we have the winter concert for grades four through eight. So?
Okay, Kelly.
Okay. So, in the world of athletics, obviously, our winter sports have begun. Mr. Underwood reported that the numbers participating are very good. The fifth and sixth grade basketball teams have twenty-four girls and twenty-eight boys participating, so great numbers there. He does have twelve games scheduled, and because of the numbers, the coaches have divided the groups into blue team and white teams, and they'll alternate those games, so just to hopefully help to, you know, optimize the playing time of those students. Seventh and eighth grade basketball teams have fifteen girls and sixteen boys. Both of those teams are playing B-level games for their schedule. They have thirteen games scheduled with one tournament scheduled probably, I believe it was over the holiday break in Lancaster. Of course, when I typed this note, I said no snow yet, but our Nordic ski team has been working and doing, of course, all their dry land training, so I'm sure they're very excited to see the snow come down, and hopefully that means for them tomorrow, they'll get to go outside. And our wrestling team just began practicing this past Friday on December 2nd. I'm not sure what the numbers are right there at this point. The Elks Hoop Shoot, that was held November 16th at the high school, and PES students competing were Lucas Diamond, who placed first, Aubrey Brunt was also first, Lucas Legacy came in second, Kaylee Merrifield was fourth, Anna Apriliano was another first place, and Hayden Whitman was fourth. So, all of those first-place finishers now advance in January, they go to the Northern Regionals, which again will be held in Lebanon. So, we wish our best to Lucas Diamond, Aubrey Brunt, and Anna Apriliano. And on the safety updates, we did conduct an off-site evacuation on November 16th. The entire event took approximately thirty minutes, and that's from the time the alarm sounded, evacuating all the students out of the building, taking attendance here, then moving to the high school, taking attendance again, and then returning back to the, here to the elementary school. So, Chief Clogston really commented on how well the entire school responded, and with the exception of our very youngest students, the preschool students, they did the initial evacuation here, but they did not make the walk over to the high school, but every single student was able to successfully cooperate and go through that drill with flying colors. And many thanks to the high school as well for helping us conduct the drill. One of the things Chief Clogston did talk about was the number of drills, fire drills specifically to get in, and which is ten. He's, he's letting us know, so he's really pleased that at this point, we already are halfway there with five completed. And he said, maybe we'll pull one in December, so maybe before it gets too cold, we'll see. The other piece too was on November 17th, we had Chief Steve LaFave and Sergeant Betsy Scrafford come and attend our faculty meeting, and they came in and reviewed with faculty and staff that, the Alice training, that deny, defend portion that we talked about, you know, regarding an active shooter event. The training involved video and discussion regarding that situation. Staff also saw video of, and just of precautions and safety take, steps to take, how best to deny and defend if they're not able to safely flee the area. So, staff were also instructed to bring their cell phones with them that day, and together we tested the alerts app, which was great for everybody to be right here and, you know, seeing a test alert come across, being able to respond to it, and then just see really how the, how the app plays out, to be able to ask their questions, you know, to the, to the police officers, to myself, and it was just good conversation. They were really responsive and appreciative of the training and had a lot of good clarifying questions for everyone. Safety committee would like to thank Mrs. Flynn for allowing that faculty meeting to be the focus, was this training, and also obviously the Chief LaFave and Sergeant Scrafford. And then anyone that wasn't able to attend the meeting, I did type up just information that was shared that day. I brought copies in case anybody would want to take a look at it, but that went out to all the faculty and staff as well, with the suggestion of printing that off and putting that right within their safety folders that are also in their classrooms. And that's it.
Any questions for group? Thank you very much. Privilege on the floor. There's only one privilege. Consent items, claims and payroll, these all signed, nothing, correspondence?
Just the audit report was done, Michael signed off on it, so printed copies in their final form will come, some members of the board, you'll get them electronically. If you want a printed copy, we can get you one. And there were no, there were no recommendations from the auditors. They didn't change anything, and there were no, no recommendations, so that's a good thing.
Discussion items, date for January meeting?
Yes, January 2nd is the legal holiday for, for New Year's Day, so I'm just wondering if, what day you'd like to meet. Options, I'm wide open, the 4th, the 5th, that's a Wednesday or Thursday, or Monday the night.
But you do Wednesday the 4th?
You can do that.
I can't do Wednesday the 4th.
It's fine, if everyone else can do it, I can.
No, you want, you want to be involved, we've got some budget work to do, you'll, you'll want to be involved, sorry.
I could do the 9th.
You can do the 4th.
Yeah, if that works.
9th?
I can't do the 9th.
How about the Tuesday, the 3rd?
Wednesday's the 4th, Thursday's the 5th, Tuesday the 10th?
Tuesday would work for me, yeah.
I can't do Tuesday the 10th.
What about Tuesday the 3rd?
Tuesday the 3rd, is that open where?
No, I have the high school.
The high school?
I actually have two that night, the high school.
Wednesday the 11th?
That's a public budget hearing for the high school.
Is the 3rd?
Yes.
Wednesdays are bad for me, I don't work until, if I get back here in time.
I can make the 9th work, if we're good in the group. I was the only one that couldn't do it. I will make it work.
The 9th, okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Jim.
I can, I can get Trish to cover that, let me answer it.
Monday the night. Can we do Trish Lindberg CTE first, because I'm going to lose you in the budget?
Okay.
So, all it would be, the stipend is thirty-four hundred dollars to see ETC, and then you know all the perks that come.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Motion to enter into a contract with ETC and Dr. Lindberg.
And make a motion, go into contract with Dr. Lindberg, ETC, CT. The second, hold the paper.
Aye.
So, draft fiscal year eighteen budget.
Let me, let me start out by saying, this is, let me show you something first. This is, this is the adequacy figures, and you've been reading about the court case in the state, where the court just stepped in and said, the state cannot target aid under the adequacy law to property poor communities. You have to, you have to send the money out based on the number of ADMs or the enrollment of the district. So, property poor towns like Plymouth and a couple of others are going to lose what was called stabilization money. And this, this has a major impact. And adequacy comes to the towns based on, based on a number of criteria. One is the number of kids in, in the school, but also the town gets credit for its economic status, or lack of status. So, at the, at, at the summary down below, you can see that Plymouth is going to lose ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. The group that's, is trying to get the legislature to fund that lack of money. They're meeting in Franklin, the Franklin mayor and the Northfield selectmen met, and a number of communities came and said, we have to lobby the legislature to get this money back. And they're targeting, as I understand it, they're targeting some of the state surplus that just ended in the fiscal year and to fund, on top of, you can target aid as long as you pay everybody what they deserve for ADMs. You can do anything you want. The problem was that the state has said, this is what we got, and this is how we're paying it. So, there's a four percent cut every year until stabilization grants are gone, so it's sort of a slow torture on this. But you can see Plymouth is losing ninety-five thousand dollars, Rumney sixty-two thousand. And you can see that where Thornton was capped, you couldn't get more than eighty percent of your, of the money of the ADMs you were entitled to, so they could fund stabilization. So, now Thornton is free to get all the money it deserves, so that's why they're up a hundred and twenty-one thousand. I have no idea how Ashlyn gets a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, I don't, I don't know. They're not in our SAU, and I don't know how they fit. So, I just, you know, part one of going into, into this budget, and we're going to spend some time on the revenue side, is a loss of state aid. And in your budget, it's forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So, let me walk through some of the lowlights of this budget. This initial budget, I did not do any trimming to, you guys set policy, so we'll talk about all of those things, so it's, it's a pretty high number right now, so, and that's why we spent some time talking about this. But what we have here is major impact of revenues that we're not going to get, or not going to get as much as we got the previous year, and also the impact of special education, additional special education needs, which you know, you don't have an awful lot flexibility So, let me walk through these, these revenue sources. We used a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of unanticipated revenue and leftover appropriations that we didn't spend to help lower this year's tax rate, the tax bill that we just got. So, that's the unreserved fund balance. At this time of year, we never project, we put zero in there, because we don't know how we're going to close our special ed impacts sometimes. You just don't know what's going to happen, so that's showing. That's a rather high unreserved fund balance for I, for us historically, but we really did want to, to help lower the tax rate or stabilize the tax rate. Last year, we got twenty thousand dollars, almost twenty-one thousand dollars in catastrophic aid. We're going to have to dig a little bit deeper, but I'm not sure any of our programs qualify at the moment for catastrophic aid. And there's our adequacy grant, we're losing forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Our regular ed tuition will be down sixty-three thousand dollars, that's just enrollment. Sped tuition will be down thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, again, that's enrollment, and those are, those are kids that come from other districts or have gone through the eighth grade and they're gone. And then earnings is nine dollars. So, we're down in revenues from last year, three hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and six dollars, or seventy-three cents per thousand. Now, appropriation increases in special education. Salaries and stipends, seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Tuition, this is people going outside our district. These are people that have to be, programs that we can't accommodate here, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Speech, physical therapy, occupational therapy services are up twenty-three thousand, six seventy-one. And transportation, if you're sending people out, obviously, they're getting transported, and that's up fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. So, increases in special ed are at two hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-five, or sixty-eight cents per thousand. Still with me?
Unfortunately.
Yes, not with it.
No. So, that's, that's, but that is the beginning. We got, we have, both of us, you on the policy side and me, trying to figure out how to pull this off on the administrative side, so we'll get to where we need to get to. It's just how quickly we've got there. Let me take you to the back page first, that's the, that's the revenue page, so you can get a, you can get a sense of, highlighted revenues that, that we used on the front sheet. But basically, the bottom line is, with this current budget and these revenues, our assessment would be up five hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, or twelve point two six percent, or a dollar twenty-seven per thousand. So, that's our, that's our starting point. And again, we will, we are going to go mining for, for dollars as best we can. We don't, we're not going to inflate the revenues, but we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get a better look at. Let me walk through quickly appropriation side. The eleven hundred account, as we've always said, that's education as we knew it, regular ed. They funded thirty-two point six FTEs, and if you remember, at this time of year, we fund FTEs. We don't place them in classrooms, we just, we have thirty-two point six positions to teach regular ed. And that account actually is down ninety-five thousand, seventy dollars. We've had some personnel changes and things, so, and it also reflects that you won't be having a warrant article on computers. You did the three sixty thousand dollar warrant articles, and we're in pretty good shape. Substitutes is funded at the same level last year, other than a little click up for FICA and unemployment. It actually is down a little bit, workers comp. Instructional aids, we don't have any currently. These would be regular ed aids, we don't have any currently. We've had discussions about overall personnel, but at the moment, there's nothing in there. Special education, the account itself is up about a quarter of a million dollars. That's six point eight FTEs and the three retirement stipends. Now, one of the things that we did is we took the existing staff salaries and kept them in the budget, plus added the retirement stipends. We'll have an opportunity to review those and, and see what personnel we end up, where we end up going. We don't have a recommendation yet on the structure of our, because we're having so many special ed folks leave. Julie and Kelly are working with Kyla and Fran to say, what's our K through eight special ed structure? What kind of programs are we running? When we make a decision on the programs we're going to be running, then we'll go get the personnel that fit, that fit that. So, you know, we may be able to modify that lineup. And then down underneath, tuition, that's gone from a hundred and eleven thousand up to two hundred and forty-three thousand. That is, quite frankly, one program. We have that program in the budget. We're looking at on paper that program, how to do things, you know, options out, options in, you know, does the family remain in the community? So, we, we have some time to, to work with those sorts of things, so, but that, that's something. We funded special ed aids twenty point five. That is around what we have at the moment, quite honestly. And then that could fluctuate based on, out of district tuition. There may be an aid that's brought here, and the money comes out of tuition, and we have some savings. Or if people go out, you increase the tuition account and drop the aid, but that, right now, we're at twenty and a half positions. Special ed secretary remains the same. Extended school year is up a little bit, and that includes preschool. Bilingual ed is funded at the same level. Co-curricular, the same. School-sponsored athletics, the same. After-school program is funded, the same. Preschool is down a little bit at the moment, we'll take a further review of that. Guidance remains the same. Medical and nursing all remain the same. Psychological services, speech, then you run into speech aid, physical therapy, occupational Instructional training, that's the professional development accounts. School library, audio visual, school board. And you can see the elected positions, moderator, treasurer. Auditing is down a little bit, legal is funded at the same level. Contingency would be a separate warrant article. The SAU office, here's the, here's the problem with funding the SAU office, is that it's a, it's a one-year average, so sometimes you go up fifteen thousand, sometimes you go down fifteen thousand based on ADMs and the equalized valuation of the community. So, the high school has a formula that has a three-year average, so you don't have this wild swing. So, right now, we've got a wild swing up. Yes, the U budget in and of itself is up about one and a half percent or something like that, but we have a higher impact in Plymouth. Holdenis, for instance, is going down fifteen thousand dollars, just based on the formula, so it's just one of those years. Technology coordinator, principal's office, secretarial, operation of the building. We have, what's driving that is we have a floor scrubber in there as a piece of equipment. Other than that, it's, it's pretty much the same as it has been. Park and rec budget, that's our share of all the outside grounds work that gets done, that you share with the town and also with Penny Baker District. That's up sixteen hundred dollars. Transportation, you have the regular transportation, that's regular yellow buses, school buses, and then you have the special ed that's up significantly in that account. And then food service is outsourced, construction and building improvements, we're not doing anything, debt service is all paid off. And then you can see the summary of health insurance, that's up thirty-two thousand dollars, and dental is down a little bit. So, you can see on the appropriation side, district money, it's seven million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, which is up about two hundred and forty-six thousand in district funds. So, that's where we are. So, what Julie and I and we're going to do is start going through the programs much more carefully, and I will be going through revenues much more carefully. What we have to get a sense from the board is, you know, where, and as an overall percentage, where would you like this to, to be at? And then what we'll do is we'll go in and, and give you some options to get at that number. But I have to tell you, you know, it's going to, it's going to be in, it's going to be in the other stuff we do. Special ed, there's not a lot we can do about, other than firm up the programs and really nail some things down. Revenues, there's not a lot, we just have to go in and make sure that we've accounted for everything we're going to do. It's all the other spending that we do, regular ed, all of, all the, all the other things that we do that make Plymouth, Plymouth. So, that's the, that's the tough part. So, some years we come in and, and, you know, we're in pretty good shape, but this year, this year we're not, and we're going to have to work pretty hard at this.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Any questions for Mark? That's going to take some nice discussion.
I actually do have a question. With the special ed aids, it's down sixty-four thousand and a half. Is that just because of where our kids are and that number of aids?
Just where we are, yeah. And when you lose tuition kids, the aid comes out, but you also see the lack of revenue on the revenue side.
Privilege up the floor, too. Do you want to create a motion to go into non-public session?
It's moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.